Good evening. Today is Thursday, June 8th, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to all of you who are in the audience this evening and to anyone who may be watching online from home. Director Chester, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Tonight, we will begin with the recognition of the John Coscorin Award recipients. All right, can everybody hear me in the back? Excellent. All right, it's my pleasure to introduce and to say a few words about each of this year's John Coscorin Volunteer Award winners. This is the 21st year that the awards have been given out. They are named in honor of John Coscorin, a longtime advocate for volunteerism who served 34 years at Catholic charities and retired as Associate Director in 1993. Mr. Coscorin also served as a member of the District 191 Board of Education. We'll start with our community category student recipients. First, we have Cade Benel. Cade, could you join me at the podium? Cade is a senior at Burnsville High School and was nominated by seven different Burnsville High School staff members. He's a member of the Youth Service Advisory Council, National Honor Society, Burnsville Strong, and Link Crew, and has volunteered more than 2,000 hours during his high school career, both as part of BHS activities and in the community. He volunteers his time with many community organizations, including as a teacher assistant and sports director for American Montessori in Burnsville and with Feed My Starving Children. Among the nominations he received, BHS teacher Molly Bousso noted that Cade makes a positive impact wherever he goes. She wrote, "Cade is a remarkable student leader. He is a caring and conscientious citizen of our school and community. It's been a pleasure to see him grow into a young man with a strong character and a drive to make the world a better place." Cade, congratulations and thank you for being a great example of leading through service.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are we doing a...
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats. Next, I'd like to invite William Mo to the podium. Hi. William is a senior at Burnsville High School and has been a vital part of the Brain Power in a Backpack volunteer team since he was in ninth grade, packing meals almost every week. He also supports the Community Pantry and Fresh Produce Food Distribution Programs, is an active member of National Honor Society and Link Crew. William qualified this year for the President Volunteer Award, having given more than 100 hours of volunteer service and achieved ambassador status in the Youth Services Program at BHS. Brain Power Coordinator Pam Voight, who nominated William, called him a dependable, capable, and determined Burnsville High School student with the skills and drive to succeed and a willingness to provide help to those around him. Thank you, William, for sharing your time and talents to make 191 a stronger community. Next, we'll move on to the community member category, and I'd like to invite Ignacio Mata to the podium. Is that Mata?
Yes, it is.
All right, great. Nacho is a volunteer in the District 191 Adult Basic Education Program, where he supports students learning English as their second language. He contributes in a number of ways, including by helping small reading groups, training students to use online programs, and providing support during reading and writing assignments. Nominator and ABE teacher Denise Griffith remarked how Nacho is encouraging, patient, and positive, and is quick to laugh and provide encouragement to students. Denise wrote, "His contributions have made a tremendous impact on our students' success. I cannot think of a more deserving individual for this prestigious award." Congratulations, Nacho, and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, I'd like to invite Takia Campbell to the podium. Takaya Campbell. Takaya?
Yeah.
Thank you. Takaya is a 2022 graduate of BHS and now serves as a volunteer coach for the Burnsville High School Track and Field Teams, a job she made plans to fill back when she was a senior. This spring, she made good on that plan, even rearranging her work schedule to make sure she could be at every practice and every meet. Coach and nominator Abby Atkins calls Takaya an integral part of the staff and an impactful coach and mentor for students. Takaya, known by team members as Coach Kai, often spends as much as 20 hours a week volunteering with the team, sharing her experience and skills with current students, and bringing positivity and energy into everything she does. Coach Atkins wrote, "I have worked with many outstanding volunteers, but I have never worked with someone with the level of dedication, passion, and generosity that I've seen with Coach Kai. Thank you for sharing your time and being such an excellent role model and mentor for BHS students." Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is the staff category. Will Janet Stanley please come to the podium? Janet Stanley is a substitute teacher and a parent of students at Harriet Bishop Elementary, where she has volunteered countless hours in almost every opportunity available. Her service has been especially important in organizing academic and community-building events, such as the school's Smart Fair, Read-a-Thon, Teacher Appreciation Week, Retiree Celebration, and more. Those events are marked by a great organization, high participation, and inclusion of all families in the Harriet Bishop community. In nominating Janet, teacher Ashley Berryman and teacher Tanya Meyer noted that she has volunteered in the Media Center and was one of the first people to sign up to help when schools started experiencing staff shortages as we started coming out of the pandemic. They wrote, "Having Janet at Harriet Bishop is a blessing. Her 'let's do it' attitude and her ability to work with others is what makes her shine." Congratulations, Janet, and thank you for all you do. Congratulations. All right, then our last award of the night is in the parent category. We're going to honor both of this year's winners together since they were nominated as something of a team. Valerie Amston and Christine Malundo, please come up to the podium. And I hope I got your names right?
Yes.
Excellent. I try. Valerie Amston and Christine Malundo are parent volunteers who have helped make lasting transformations that support the growth and effectiveness of the William Byrne Parent Teacher Organization. Valerie became active in 2019. Having heard that the Byrne PTO was struggling to attract participants, sometimes having only three people attend meetings, Val got involved and became the lead organizer and recruiter, successfully encouraging parents to show up and participate by providing a clear vision of why it mattered. Now, four years later, and even through a pandemic, PTO meetings are regularly attended by 20 to 30 parents, which has also been reflected in participation in PTO activities and in fundraisers. Christine brought her professional finance skills to bring transparency, accuracy, and simplicity to what can be an intimidating part of any volunteer organization. Thanks to her work, there are now key checks and balances on the PTO's finances that are still straightforward and understandable so that they can continue even under future volunteers with less financial knowledge. In nominating Val and Christine, the PTO's officers wrote, "Val and Christine have worked together to lead an effort that has yielded a PTO marked by shared leadership, inclusive efforts, and a thriving school community. Valerie and Christine, thank you for sharing your time and your talents to make William Byrne a better place for staff, students, and family." Congratulations to you both. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, that's the final award for this year. I just want to close by saying that I am constantly impressed by the volunteers in our community. Whether students, staff, parents, or residents, there is a spirit of service in 191 that makes me proud to live here and be a part of District 191. Once again, thank you and congratulations to each of the 2023 John Coscorin Volunteer Award winners. We'll give a minute.
I think they're looking to do a group photo.
Do they want to do a group photo?
No, I think they're doing one.
Oh. We'll pause for a minute while the room transitions. Is there an extra heat lamp shining in that spot? All right. Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, we'll receive a report about the community eligibility provision from Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board. I'm hoping that a presentation will pop up here in a moment. Be bringing to you tonight just some background information on our community eligibility provision, just kind of talking a little bit about what the eligibility reimbursement looks like, what it looks like for the district, and then some ongoing implications. As a result of the 2023 legislation, ISD 191 is moving to CEP, again, the Community Eligibility Provision, for the 23-24 school year. CEP allows high-poverty schools and districts to serve breakfast and lunch at no cost to all students, all enrolled students. The district will be reimbursed by federal first, then state, and we must agree that we will not use any other types of non-federal funds for any of the difference. But I've been assured pretty much we'll be covered both by the federal and the state funds for our programming. Vance?
I think they can shut the door.
Yeah. Schools are eligible if they're identified, student percentage is greater than or equal to 40%. This includes students that are directly certified, foster students that are certified through other means other than an application for education benefits, homeless, migrant, or runaway students. Also includes participants from Head Start, Even Start, or Early Start, and then also recipients of the Food Distribution Program on Indian Reservations, otherwise known as the FDPIR. Meal reimbursement uses a formula based on the percentage of students that are categorically eligible for free meals. Again, those schools that are greater than or equal to 62.5% will be fully reimbursed by the federal free rate. Schools that fall between with their ISP between 40 and 62.4%, then we get off into the formula land, and that's where everybody gets glossy-eyed. I'm not going to go there. But the reality is, we get a certain proportion that is at the free reimbursement rate, and then the remainder of that is reimbursed at the paid rate. The paid rate is actually less than, so just a little bit counterintuitive. This is unique to Minnesota only for state reimbursement for free meals. That will cover the difference between the federal free rate and the paid rate for free meals as claimed as paid. We have two schools that are automatically eligible for the CEP, Hidden Valley and Burnsville Alternative High School, with being above the 65%. Then our other schools are eligible, and schools like the high school that is at the lower end of the threshold, we do have the ability to combine our group schools to be able to optimize the program to make sure that we're able to pay for this. The implications for us is that we do have free meals for all students, so we are able to address that. We will not have any students that will be left hungry because of either a lack of money in an account or possibly has not applied for the meals, so we have free meals across the board. The other piece is, we will have to come up with an alternative income survey or an educational benefit type of a thing internally. We do encourage families. We hope that families will continue to help us and complete this for sake of our compensatory funding, as well as scholarship eligibility for activities and sports, to help us with that. And also, it will help us as far as the surveys for verifying income to cover the cost of produce published in process areas. One of the things that I want to... that last bit a little bit doesn't kind of fit in the other piece, but when we are asking for the alternative income survey or the educational benefit survey, that piece, we no longer will be able to verify or process those in food service. The way the law is written, all of that now has to come out of the general fund. So we have to take that type of responsibility away from food service and move it into a general fund area. We are addressing that by moving that responsibility down to our enrollment center. So that's one of the areas in which we're adding our two months for clerical support there, and they will be taking on that responsibility to help with the processing of that. Again, the general fund does cover the cost of providing free meals from the front end, and then we are reimbursed afterwards. So we will submit the claims for the differences, and this will have a labor component as well to monthly be monitoring the categorical eligibility. And so we will constantly have to be going back, verifying numbers as we're going through the percentages, where that falls, and then doing updates. So it's... there's some back office responsibilities that will increase with this, but again, we do see the benefit and the value for our families to be able to get a free lunch and a free breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, are there any comments or questions for Stacy? Director Connor?
Yeah, hi, Stacy. I just have a question. How does this grouping schools together work? Are you just... is it like two elementary schools that are grouped together, or the... I'm just... need clarification.
Like the high school and another school that had the low percentage are the same different levels? We can group them, and if their percentage rises above the 40%, then we're good to go. Okay? So that's real high-level answer. I can have our Director of Food and Nutritional Services?
Not necessary.
Okay.
I just was wondering how this grouping went.
Yeah. She has been trying to coach me repeatedly on this whole process.
It's such a high-level answer, it's above your head.
Yeah, I can usually pick these things up and translate it. I'm sorry, I'm struggling with all of the different formulas on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Others?
So is it true that I think I've heard that a meal is produced regardless if the child brings their own lunch or not? Like, there's a meal given? Like, I guess I'm just concerned about, like, having too much food, or what's happening if there's going to be wasted food, or...
Well, one, you have to kind of prepare in case everybody does come through the line.
Right.
You know, so you have to be ready for that. We are exploring different options because we do know that families, children will still bring their favorite meal, whatever, with them. But also, we're looking at, you know, Blaze Bags kind of a deal. Now, they wouldn't be the full entree types of things, but they would have within it consumables that don't spoil, so they're contained. So, you know, it may be kind of a juice bottle, isn't the right word, but everything could be sealed and contained. And it may have minimum amount of the requirements by the Fed to be eligible for meal reimbursement. So somebody may come, and it may be a fruit, a milk, and something else along that line. And it could be supplemental. Yeah. I... I... again, we're... some of these things is... it is new. We are going to kind of make sure to monitor it because your scale can tip. We talked about the free meal reimbursement, and then you had the fully paid amount reimbursement. The fully paid amount is less, and if we start flipping too far the other direction, then we're covering the cost to provide the meals, but we're not necessarily providing all of the cost for operating. So we want to make sure we're monitoring that as well.
Right.
That's that monthly, ongoing stuff.
Yeah, gotcha.
But we're not putting anything out there yet as to this is how it's going to be.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Stacy.
Yep. Did you have a clarification, then? Director Wurth?
Director Wurth, members of the board, I've had experience with the CEP program. One expected benefit was to our scholar athletes, who said they're always hungry, so to have that extra nutritious meal. The coaches appreciate it also, nutrition, so we'll see.
As the parent of one of those athletes, I concur.
They would take the extra bag.
They're always hungry.
They're always hungry. So we'll see how it plays out. Okay, thank you.
You had a question, Director Wurth?
I did, yeah. Thank you, Chair Hume. So just clarifying on something you said, Stacy, monthly monitoring for the categorical, basically to make sure...
So you're like the 40% at the high school to make sure that they wouldn't drop below the 40%. If they do, then we need to rewrite our plan, combine with another building. So we're constantly having to monitor the percentage and then the formula that applies towards it.
Got it. And then in terms of, obviously, this is for every student that walks into the cafeteria, not necessarily every student in the school that attends that day?
Well, every student in the building is eligible for a free meal.
Yep. But in terms of reimbursement, like, I guess the nature...
There's a meal count.
Yep.
The meal count continues, yeah.
Okay, so it's been a while since I've been in one of our cafeterias, but I do remember them being quite busy. So obviously, there might be some technology that might be needed.
Again, the... some of the buildings operate a little bit differently, especially like for breakfast. Some breakfast is done in the cafeteria, some is done in the classroom.
Sure.
And that is... that's paper and pencil and roster type of an approach. Again, we will have to monitor, see what the turnout is, how many students are... the number of lunches we have are built around our schedules. But we may need more personnel. We may need point of sales, more point of sales, to be able to move more folks through quickly. Some of this stuff, we're just going to have to wait and see on as to what this does to our capacity to serve meals in that timeframe.
And then in terms of the... it finally clicked for me, understanding that the clerical... thank you for spelling that out again. The clerical is going to the general fund, and all of the surveys, obviously, will be completed by clerical and thus the Welcome Center. I'm guessing that you're looking at pre-Welcome Back events, Welcome Back to School events to communicate with families in a new and different way to help them understand why... how important this is.
We have been really successful, quite frankly, coming out of the pandemic with reaching out to our partners, our families, and for the response that we have received. We hope to continue to build on that approach and communicate the need and the rationale as to why we need families still to do this, and we are very hopeful that we will continue to see the same type of results.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if a family is automatically qualified...
Directly certified, yeah.
...then we know that, and if they don't complete a survey, they're already in the system?
Yes, for the meals.
But not...
You tracking with me as far as the scholarship?
Yep, yep, all the other things.
The athletic stuff, yep.
So the survey's still... it's yes and?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Director Miller, and then Director Connor.
So just to kind of regroup and re-summarize here, so eligibility is determined by the student level, but once a building meets eligibility, or a certain amount of students within the building meet eligibility, then the entire building is eligible to decrease the opportunity of stigma, correct? Then all students will be receiving a free meal.
Under this program, 65% is required, 40% is the minimum threshold, and then even with the 40%, since we have buildings that do qualify, we can combine and do some other components to allow it to work.
So we anticipate this will be a district-wide...
Yes.
The net result of this is free lunch for everybody in the district, basically?
This is the program for us that we default into first. If a district doesn't hit the 40% or the CEP piece, the state's plan does allow for free meals for those districts as well. It's just a different plan.
And this is good for four years?
As far as, you know, so if I go through the... you're challenging me here, Director Miller. If they go through the direct certification component, I believe that's how... that part is what carries over for four years for their eligibility.
I'm just worried about a scenario where suddenly we're back to asking, suddenly asking everybody to pay for lunches in four years, or whatever the window might be if we run out of... The other concern I have is, how much of this is federal funding? Percentage-wise, roughly?
If you go back to your table that I had, so the 65% and above, all of it is federal.
Okay.
Okay, once you fall below that to the 40%, then you're multiplying that 1.6 times a portion of the students, and then the rest of it is reimbursed at...
The reason I have a little concern about that is the federal funding of mandates of this nature, especially around meals, has traditionally come with some activism around nutrition. And do we have any indication that there may be massive changes to our nutritional schedule or anything like that at this point?
Not that I'm aware of with that. I think the federal guidelines for the nutrition has been set now for almost a decade, and I don't think that part has changed.
Okay. Okay.
Director Connor?
Director Miller, members of the board, the only proposal I've heard about was Director Miller, members of the board, the only proposal I've heard about was about that chocolate milk.
I just know that at times, this becomes a hot button.
So that's a nutrition thing, yeah, but it hasn't been acted upon.
As an extension of...
But you're right, they can change.
Yeah, and we're at the mercy then to serve what they determine as the...
But it's state law now, that free meals are provided statewide for all students.
Right, well, then it could come from...
They might just get funded differently.
From a state level of, the, the other, what about the à la carte options and all of that? That remains available to the students if they want to buy additional things? This is just covering sort of the, the core meal of the day, correct? Yeah?
Yep.
Director Connor, I think you have another question?
Yeah.
And it, and it is also the first meal that is free.
Ah, okay.
So if somebody, you know, high schooler wanted to go back through a second time...
Because that never happens.
Yeah.
Again, talk to my son.
Just wondering if this program is gonna be continued through the summer like it was during COVID? Or, or modified in some kind of way to free lunches?
With summer school programming, we will be offering nutrition, our, our food nutrition services, yep.
Any other questions? All right, I just had one, and it may not be directly related to what you're talking about, but you alluded to it at some point during your presentation, so if you can't answer tonight, it's okay. You, you mentioned in passing about lunch debt, and I'm just curious where we are with lunch debt, and if the new state law has any impact on families who may have lunch debt that you're aware of?
I don't know exactly how that will take effect, and I would assume, I'm assuming that would take effect with the fiscal year. As it is right now, I believe any debt, that just gets washed out with, if we're not able to reclaim it into the general fund.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions, we will move on to the next agenda item. Next, we will receive, we will receive a report about the Unified Communication as a Service Agreement from Rachel Gordon, Director of Technology. Welcome, Rachel.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening, Chair Hume, Board Directors, and Superintendent Battle. This evening, I'm bringing forward a report, and later in the meeting, a recommendation to approve a new telephone or UCAS, Unified Communication as a Service System for our district. In March, I presented information outlining our current telephone system status. At that time, I highlighted age and the current issues with our existing system, which are deficient in a couple of key ways. First, the hardware and software is at the end of its usability. Second, the features available in our current system do not provide for modern communication features. While the formal review process began in November of 2022, we have spent over a year preparing for this recommendation. Before Phase One, we've evaluated our current system, we talked with stakeholders across the districts, we connected with other school districts to gain additional insight, and we researched the options that were out there. In November, we began the formal review process, and with Phase Two culminating tonight with this recommendation for your approval. Working in conjunction with Jared Leek, who is our district's compliance coordinator, we received and reviewed responses from four vendors to our RFP, who offered five different options. Responses were evaluated against the RFP by the defined criteria and the cost considerations, and we are recommending the option that provides ISD 191 with the best value moving forward. The decision has two components to it, the service platform, and then the vendor that we'll work with. We have chosen the Zoom phone system as the service. Of all the solutions proposed, we feel that the features of the Zoom phone most closely align to the criteria in our RFP. For implementation services and hardware, we chose Matrix NDI as the vendor. Matrix NDI is a current vendor for us, who understands our existing telephone infrastructure, and will provide critical knowledge and support as we make the transition to this new system. In March, I shared our goals for the new system, including flexibility, efficiency, added communication methods, directory integration, and critical E911 compliance. The Zoom phone solution will provide us with these features. I'd like to call out two specific features that are really important for our district stakeholders. The first is the overwhelming desire to have texting or SMS capabilities in, within our, our main communication platform. This will be included for every staff member. The second is the value of translation applications. The solutions presented to us varied in how translation was, or in some cases, was not integrated. While none of the options had a perfect solution, Zoom has the most promising existing, current, and planned expansion of translation services. This area of development in the UCAS environment is changing rapidly, literally week to week sometimes, and is exciting to see. As we transition to the new system, some things will remain the same. These include our phone numbers, and the way that the buildings make announcements over our PA systems. We will also continue to have what's called site survivability, which provides continued phone service in the event of internet disruption. There are three main cost categories for the new system. The licensing and support will replace many existing phone service costs that we already have in our budgets. Due to the increased features, the cost of the new system will be a bit higher than our existing system, and we've identified additional measures we can take to streamline our communication services and reduce this cost difference. An example of this is our current Google Voice license, which were provided during COVID and continue now because of the availability of texting and the mobility that it offers. Those features will now be included in the new system, and we will discontinue Google Voice licensing and reallocate those funds to help cover the costs of the new telephone system. Another area is our district cell phones, which will be reduced as well. These additional cost savings will take about a year to kind of settle, as we are able to pull those out as the new system is implemented. Two categories of one-time capital costs are also part of this recommendation. Those include the new physical phones, headsets, and telephone equipment to connect the new system. One thing we are very excited about is the ability to replace the aging phones in our classrooms and our spaces. The implementation costs also include one-time expenses that provide for the physical deployment, so we have a lot of phones to deploy out, the physical deployment of the new phones, as well as all of the tasks required to set up, configure, and integrate the system so that it's ready to go. As we deploy Zoom phone, ensuring our staff are comfortable... Oh, I am on the right slide, sorry about that. As we deploy Zoom phone, our, ensuring our staff are comfortable using the new phone system will be a priority. Training will be pushed out over the late summer and fall to various groups, depending on their role. Individuals who answer and route calls, like our main folks in our offices, will have more training to ensure that they are able to quickly acclimate to the phone, Zoom phone. Basic functionality will be provided at the back-to-school time, with additional training on more advanced and/or new features occurring over the course of the 23, 24 school year. The ultimate goal is that this new system will provide easy, effective ways for our staff to communicate internally with each other, as well as externally with our families, the community, and beyond. We believe this recommendation will help us meet these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Director Miller?
Thank you. Responses received from four vendors with five options, I, some of the options crossed across vendors, I assume? That's not twenty options, correct? Twenty technology options were presented, right?
No, we, we received in four different platforms, and Zoom was one that was in two vendors, that on Zoom.
So I assume Teams and Google Meet and such were part of the...
It was Vonage, Ring Central, a hybrid with Ring Central, and Zoom.
Okay. I admit, I'm a little concerned about Zoom, just I know quite a lot of the corporate world has moved away from Zoom after the little spike they had during COVID, but I, I'm, I'm not gonna question, I bet you vetted this out quite well. I just, I want to make sure we choose something that has a long-term viability. What about security? Is, was that as part of the analysis and concern?
Yeah, for all of the systems, obviously, security is very high on the priority list, in my mind, and many others, as we were looking through this. And so that was one of the things that we looked at, at all of the different options, yeah.
Okay. And this will afford, so it's an integrated platform with chat, desktop use of the phone, video communication, et cetera, file transfer, all that will be incorporated?
Yeah, the Zoom phone will be really focused, they will have the ability for, for chat will be an option, whether we choose to, because we also have chat in Google, so that's one of those questions of like, do we activate it in both, or do we? So the focus is on Zoom phone. The video conferencing licenses are a separate piece of it, and so we did not, that was outside of the scope of this, of this RFP. So that's not a part of it. We are across-the-board, Google meets, and that's pretty settled in the district, so we did not, we did not look into that at this point.
And it has a vibrant applica, app-based usage also? I mean, I understand we need to buy phones, but frankly, the world's moving away from putting phones anywhere anymore, right?
Yeah, we anticipate many, one of the, many folks might choose to just use the app-based on an existing device, whether that's on their district Chromebook, a laptop, cellphone. And so that's one of the nice features, is the mobility piece of it, is that it does have a very nice, robust app.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Any others?
Thank you, Chair Hume. So understanding there, two different funding streams, what consideration was given in terms of the translation abilities of, of this package, and the ability to possibly save elsewhere with the translation services that we're using?
Yeah, so I would say the translation piece is the one that is, there's gonna be a lot of discovery in the la, in the next year, and I anticipate that that's one of those things that we're going to see then, you know, kind of that Venn diagram of overlap with an existing system, and we may be able to pull that out. One of the tricks, though, of course, is we don't want to pull anything out until we have something that's established, and people are comfortable using, and so that's kind of that, part of that over the course of the next year, is really seeing where this can be our go-to, and then where we can kind of peel away things that are, that are redundant, and we don't need anymore.
And I'm sure, you know, getting feedback from users in terms of, you know, is it making sense? You know, how usable is it as far as translations go, you know, as a replacement?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right, I don't have any questions either, so thank you very much, Rachel.
Thank you.
Next, we will receive a report about the co- co-located mental health services proposed contract from Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student Support Services. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. I'm here this evening to report on a co-located mental health services, and how those services were vetted through the request through a proposal. We started with a vision, and our vision was to provide the co-located mental health resources for our students, our families, and our staff across all buildings through our K-12 system. A request for proposal was advertised to receive bids from agencies. After receiving the proposals submitted by the different agencies, the proposals were then scored using the evaluation rubric. We followed up with agencies for clarifying questions and proposed the bids. After multiple meetings with the agencies reviewing the rubric, including reference checks from surrounding districts, it became clear that Washburn Center for Children would be the co-located agency providing the mental health services in the district. Again, we're very excited that we are about to partnership between Washburn and the district. We strongly believe that Washburn aligns with the needs of our community, and will have the capacity to support our students and our families across the district. That ends my report.
Thank you. Comments or questions from board members? Director Ward?
I'm just curious about the, the ratio as far as, like, for the staffing that we'll have for the, like, therapists for each school? Like, do we know, like, how many will have? Is that something that was part of the RFP? Like, did they say how many therapists that we would have access to?
So, we put the bid out for ten point eight FTEs. The point eight is a little bit more than what we've seen in the past, because one of the FTEs was supported through a grant that is no longer gonna be an option. So I rolled it into this proposal as well. So across the district, we'll have ten point eight. We will have six across the elementary, and four point eight across the secondaries. We're looking at one per middle school, two per high school, and the point eight at the, at Boz Alternative Center.
This, only because I experienced this myself?
Yeah.
Do they, what, do they have some sort of a plan for, like, replacing people when they have staff that leaves? Because I fell into this gap myself, where my, my student was seeing a therapist, and they left, and then there was no replacement. So I'm just bringing this up, because this could potentially be a problem, and if they know, like, how are they going to address that? Do they have other staff to fill those positions? Like, you know, and that, I suppose would be something maybe that you've heard through other references, that, you know, they were good about filling their open positions, or I just know with the lack of, you know, this is, it's an issue, trying to get mental health services for children, that when they leave, it's hard to fill the position.
And I would say that your experience was similar across the district, as multiple buildings didn't have access to the co-located mental health. And so when we were putting our proposal together, and we were putting our rubric together, having the capacity to fill those FTEs was huge, and even when we went back and questioned, asked the questions or whatever, we just, that was one of the things that was one of our bigger decisions, as far as making sure that we have the capacity to do it. Now, Washburn is, we're right now trying to draw up a contract that we're gonna be able to agree on. There's some specific language there, whatever, that I want this one to have in, where maybe the previous one did not. And so they're working with me to be able to do that. Once the contract is signed, then they will go ahead and they will start advertising that we have open positions here in Burnsville. So that's the first step moving forward. In September 1st, I'm not sure that we'll have all those therapists onboarded right off the top of the bat, but there will be a transition, but I am anticipating very shortly we will have our buildings covered.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Director Tom?
Yeah, hi, Amy.
Hi.
I was just curious, have we ever tried to partner with the behavioral health services that is, like, right across the street? One way or another. For, I think it's only for high school students, though, but I was just curious, since they're so convenient.
Well, the request for proposal that I sent out, I was, I only looked at those that bid it in and proposed that piece to us. So as far as the behavioral health one that you're talking about, I'm not familiar with that one, as I've really only worked with Uable.
Yes. Good evening, Director Connor. I believe that facility that you're speaking of is not co-located inside schools, instead it supports an inpatient or outpatient treatment.
Oh, okay, I, okay, I misunderstood.
They're outpatient, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, okay, well, oh.
Yeah, the co-located services, they come to our building, and they're pretty much become part of the team of the building, supporting... So our, the co-located health ser, mental health services, our students can access that during the school day. So they are not taken off-campus?
I see.
Yeah, all of it happens within the school day for our, for our families.
Absolutely, so our, our students and families do access the program that you're speaking of, just in a different way.
Yeah, because I know they, they do have students that just go there, and that is part of their class curriculum, or IEP, or whatever, you know? And it's so convenient, but yeah, so I was just curious how, if we had any connection with them, but, okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Amy.
You're welcome.
And next, we will receive a report about the proposed FY24 adopted budget from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services, and Tyler, I always forget, Denny?
Denny.
Denny, Director of Finance, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Hume, Directors of the Board, tonight, Stacy Solvine, Tyler Denny, and I will present my recommended budget for the 2023-24 school year. I wanted you and the public to note that the board book materials for the fiscal year 24 budget presentation include updated and historical formats for sharing my recommendation. I believe the fiscal year 24 budget documents represent greater transparency about our sources of revenue and how we are spending... and how we are spending, are proposing to spend our funding. There is a link to the full executive summary within the presentation. If you review the table of contents, you will see the full breadth of information we are providing to the board and the public. A few new features include individual school budgets with a comparison to previous years, allocations for non-public schools, for example, St. John's Catholic School, integration of the new strategic roadmap, expenditures at the object level, historic documents board members are used to receiving, comparison to six other comparable school districts, an entirely new look, three years of forecasts. You will also receive open facility budgets, Metcalf Middle School, MW Savage Elementary, and Sioux Trail Elementary. Lastly, revenues and expenditures provided in summary and various levels of detail for all funds. I want to thank Stacy Solvin, Tyler Denny, Director of Finance, and Pam Jensen, Finance Project Manager, for their long out, long, long hours to create the fiscal year '24 budget documents. And I want to highlight the additional long hours they spent updating all figures based on the legislature passing and Governor Walz signing the 2023 Omnibus Education Bill. Now turn it over to Executive Director Solvin and Director Denny.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board. I appreciate that, Dr. Battle, as, as far as recognizing the work. And I am still going to turn over 99% of the effort and the labor and the vision. And the, the product that you see before you is directly related to Tyler and his team. I helped with some guidance on a couple of things, provided some insight, kind of said, this is where I want to end up. I shared that before with you. I want the board to have options over the next few years. And they said, great, we also have a vision on how we want to present this information. Can we go ahead and start moving in that direction? They said, give me a sample, what that looks like. And it's like, go, game on, move with it. And they then combined the two. And what you see before you tonight is a product of that. I hope that you will come to value this approach as we are presenting this to you. But again, it is Tyler and, and his team have put in the majority of the work for this, and I want to thank them publicly for their work. So, well done.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Hume, Superintendent Dr. Battle, and members of the board. Tonight, I'll be providing a report on the proposed '23-24 budget. The timeline for the fiscal year '24 budget began in January and February with the '23 revised budget and preliminary assumptions. Throughout the last several months, the board received updates about the legislative session and our budget assumptions. Tonight, we will review the proposed budget, and then at the next meeting, we will bring forward the recommendation for approval. The revenue assumptions. We are assuming 7,364 students K-12. Those 24 projections are actually 20 students higher than 23 projections. So that means no declining enrollment revenue needed for '24. 4% increase on the general education formula, and that's approximately $2.2 million in extra revenue. $5 million increase in the cost subsidies for special education and English learners. And then the continued use of the federal pandemic relief funds. We have approximately $4 million that we're using for current costs or supplanting. And then the almost $6 million for new costs. The expenditure assumptions for the '24 budget. We're assuming a 2.5% increase to the sales on the teacher salary schedule. 6% transportation increase assumed based on the contract with Schmieden Sons. 18% increase on utilities, 9% increase on medical insurance premiums based on history. $3.5 million contingency to address the unfunded mandates from the legislative session. $1.3 million in additional expenses related to requests for staffing and budget support. And in the presentation, there's a link to the document that was presented at past meetings with all of the details. And then just in the last few days, the district also added a licensed chemical dependency counselor using new state funding passed during the legislative session. That's approximately $95,000 in revenue that must be used for a new position. It can't be for a current position that we have. This next slide is all of the different grants that we, that we have to support our priorities. The first three grants are new for fiscal year '24. Several of these grants are multiple years. So for example, the $472,000 Grow Your Own Student is $472,000 to be used over the five fiscal years. And we also included the ones that we were awarded last year that are still in progress. So now we can get into the numbers. This is the proposed adopted budget for all funds. So on the left is the projected beginning fund balance. Then we have the proposed revenue budget, $203,916,555. Proposed expenditure budget of $203,315,861, leading to a proj- to a projected fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2024 of $63,814,61. It's approximately a $600,000 increase across all funds. And it's a $2.8 million increase to the general fund balance. So we get all that revenue. What kind of restrictions are there? The revenue that the district receives can be restricted for specific uses such as general fund capital, which is used for personnel and equipment per state statutes. Then we get title funds, which are federal funds designated for a specific purpose, typically used with high poverty rates. The technology levy is a voter-approved source of revenue designated specifically for technology personnel and equipment. And then you have the different funds like food and nutrition services, community education, and debt service funds, which are separate from the general fund and have their own set of restrictions. So now into general fund revenues. We have $156,314,616. The largest source, of course, is state sources, 65% or $102.5 million. And then there's a five-year comparison on the right. And you, and this graph shows a large state increase, increase for state aid from the legislative session. And then you can also see the federal aid increase as well. And that's directly related to the additional pandemic relief funds. General fund expenditures, we have $153,492,985. The graph on the left breaks that down by the type or object series. So 78% or $118.5 million is spent on our staff. We have then the five-year comparison on the right, again, showing the, the investment we place in our people and how that is growing. This graph is the same general fund expenditures, just broken out by purpose or by program area. 75% or almost $116 million is spent on direct instruction and instructional support. That would include regular vocational, special education, and then instructional support piece as well. Another way to look at our general fund expenses. This table shows the district's general fund staff by bargaining group. It has the FTE, salary and benefits for each bargaining group, and the percentage of the total cost. Almost 70% is our, our teacher group. The next largest is 7.7%, which is our educational assistance. This listing is as of a point in time, and it will change as the year goes on. And then there is a link at the bottom that can take you to the detailed descriptions of what all those bargaining groups are. So that concludes the general fund. We'll now move into food and nutrition services. Fund revenues, $6,41,113. With the universal free meals that we discussed a little bit earlier, we will actually go back to being funded mostly by federal revenue, 81%. The state picks up a portion, that's, we're budgeting 15%. And then there is a small amount budgeted for sales to students and adults. So that would be your adult meals or your à la carte purchases. Food and nutrition service fund expenditures, $6,27,292. Almost half, 2.9 million, is spent on staffing. 48% is spent on food, milk, and supplies to provide students meals. Again, there's the five-year comparison on that, on this slide as well. Community service fund revenues, $6,395,673. There is a slight drop in revenue compared to 2023. And similar to the general fund, community education also received federal pandemic relief funds. Those funds assisted adult basic education and pre-K programs. And those expired in 2023, so that's why we're seeing a slight drop in revenue as well. The largest source for community education is local. 38% or 2.7 million is for tuition fees and donations and other miscellaneous revenues. 28% or 1.8 million is from the state. The legislative session did pass increases for community education, but that aid will be in 2025. Community service expenditures, $6,365,431. 82% or 5.2 million is for staffing. Again, the similar graphs, five-year comparison as well. Fund balance history. This slide and the next slide are new graphics showing the fund balance history by fund. This table has two years of actual history, the current budget, the proposed 2024 budget, and two years of projections. This particular slide is just full of numbers for those that like numbers way too much, like I do. This graph is a little bit easier to read. It's the same information. It does actually have an extra year of history, 1920, and then an extra projection as well. This graph shows the strategic increase in fund balance, partially from the use of the pandemic relief funds. You'll also notice the drop in 2020, in '24, '25. This is the cliff that districts have heard about. That's the year we no longer have the relief funds, so we're anticipating a spend down. But after adding to the fund balance, the last few years, we have a healthy fund balance in order to withstand that fiscal cliff. Current reality graphic, this has been presented in the past. This shows the actuals for last year, '21, '22. It shows the adopted budget compared to the revised budget for '22, '23. And then it shows the proposed budget for '23, '24. It also shows beginning fund balances and proposed ending balances and the breakdown of the fund balance categories. You will notice that it's, the unassigned fund balance percentage actually goes down slightly, 14.12 from 14.52. We are increasing the fund balance by 2.8 million, but we're also increasing our expenditures. So that percentage does drop just a little bit. And that concludes my report on the '23-24 proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, I imagine there may be a few questions. Anyone? This would be a first, oh, there we go.
No, go right ahead.
I don't necessarily have questions at this point because the budget book is just so wonderful. I really appreciate all the information. It reads, it almost reads like an audit, which I, which I really appreciate. There's a lot of transparency, Dr. Battle, you mentioned it in your opening. A lot of information that helps to explain many of the why questions that, that I know I have. And so the questions that I, that I typically send were far fewer. And I am, I'm continuing to work through the book, so thank you, thank you, you and your team, for pulling that together because anybody that takes the time to look through that book, if they're interested in knowing about where we get our funding, how we're spending it, about the people in our district, there's so much more information in there for, for anybody who's interested. And you certainly don't have to read it all in one sitting. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reserve questions, I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Director Miller, I think you had your hand up also.
I, I did. I would like to touch back on the 3.5 million contingency. Can we unpack a little bit about?
Yeah.
That's a lot of money. And, and how did, how did we arrive at 3.5, not 3.25 or 4 million or whatever? And what is the intent on, a little bit better clarity on what the intent of that money is?
I'll take that first, and then you can join in. So thank you, Director Miller, members of the board. So part of the contingency was a preliminary look at the 54-page double-sided omnibus bill summary. And one of the major factors was the unemployment insurance. And so a bulk of that is for that unemployment. But then we are setting aside for things we may discover. Some items were funded, some we have to put the money up first and be reimbursed. We are finding some, one thing at least that the legislator is, legislature and governor proposed was that if you provide student IDs, you must provide the crisis number lines, phone numbers for students to have easy access to get some support when needed. So we met with our photographer, already on it, no cost. So we're just going to keep a running list. And so similar to if you open the link, as soon as we know what the expenditure is, we will let the board know. So I'll work with officers. So Stacy can give you a little detail about how much the unemployment. So we're hoping 3.5, but as I said, we're still unpacking everything. He mentioned earlier about the CEP. You can't use your food and nutrition funds for the extra clerical support, so that's going to hit the general fund. So that's an example of what we already know, so the 3.5 is for the unknowns. And I'll turn it over to Stacy and Tyler.
And let me be clear. By the time we reached our, our revised budget, we will have a much better understanding of, of all of the different acts and how they may impact us financially. This in no way, shape, or form should be looked at as a slush fund. It is just meant that it's not something that's being taken away. By the time we hit our revised budget, we'll be able to tighten these numbers up and that 3.5 million, whatever isn't used for the, the unknown mandates, if you will, will end up going back straight into the general fund. So it, it isn't a, we're going to spend 3.5 million dollars more. We just want to make sure that if something has to- We just want to make sure that if something has to be implemented, we're not coming back and saying, now, how are we going to pay for that? We're setting aside money, but during the revised budget, that will drop back in what is not needed.
I'm glad you used the S-word. I was slush. I was not, I wasn't going to go there, but that was in the back of my mind. I think I would be more comfortable probably with something a little bit more with guardrails and intentions around it ultimately, and with reporting as you implied. So if we're going to set aside, whether it ends up being three and a half or two and a half or whatever it is, understanding, you know, half a million for to cover this area mandates, seven hundred and fifty for this, that sort of thing. And then somewhat of a regular scheduled update on the information of where we are getting to that number and what we run into. Might be that you ask for more. I don't know, but it just.
I, I don't think we'll be asking for more. I really, that was a safe conservative number. I do like to work with conservative numbers. But I do want to assure you that when it comes to paying out for those expenditures that we may have, we will keep that list of, this was one of those areas. So that when we come back around to the revised budget, we should be able to demonstrate we spent fifty thousand here, we spent another seventy five thousand here, and we only need a hundred and twenty five thousand, so you have three hundred and thirty five thou, or three, three and a half million that goes back almost. Yeah.
Okay.
Just to dovetail on Director Miller's comments, I, I concur. I think for, for two reasons. One, I think it's just good practice to have that reporting. I think also it will be a, a good tracker in terms of having conversations with our legislators, in terms of the impact of their unfunded mandates. We'll be able to share with them concretely the impact of, you know, certainly well-intentioned legislation. And thankfully, you know, we are able to set aside this money so that we can, we can cover ourselves. So I, I agree with Director Miller.
Director Alt, members of the board, for a few, I wouldn't say a few, but some provisions do have that monitoring built in. The legislature expects a report to see the impact and then they're going to reevaluate. For example, they've set aside some money for reimbursement, but they actually need the districts to report, was it enough? And they do have built in to go back and reevaluate. So.
Good to know.
I, I will share one thing that I, I do anticipate with all of this. There is a lot more reporting that is going to have to occur back to the state, a lot more tracking in different areas. So some of the, the back office support for this type of stuff, we will have additional time for that as well.
If not, I had one, more of a comment, maybe a little bit of question in there. So Tyler, you mentioned at one point, whatever, you mentioned a couple of times, the pandemic relief funds and how that runs out. This is the last school year where that money will be available, correct? Or never yes or no question, is it?
We are going to try to complete it this fiscal year. It does run out a little bit into the fall of the following fiscal year.
It was like September or something, right?
The September, the actual date?
September, end of September, twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
So it would cross into the twenty five, twenty six school year.
I see.
So the goal is to, to spend it down and, and kind of be done with it instead of spending it over three months.
And I guess my comment or question is, the budget that's being proposed and recommended to the board that will be voting on in two weeks, everything that's here, it seems like it sets us up. You mentioned, you mentioned the phrase that I kind of cringe every time I hear it, the cliff, that we're not setting ourselves to be jumping off a cliff a year from now. It's more of a ledge, perhaps.
Well, not even so much a ledge. Again, even with the projections that go out, I'm looking to, my hope is to get you back to around twelve percent in four years.
Right.
So we will take incremental steps, monitor what type of funding we're receiving, what our enrollment looks like, what expenditures we can continue to reduce, get our best return on investment, and do this incrementally over time.
That's why I call it a ledge and not a cliff.
Okay, I like steps, but sure.
Steps work also. Cliffs just sound scary.
Yep.
And, no, but I think that's important though, because we don't want people in the public to think that we're headed for a financial catastrophe a year from now. We've seen multiple districts across the state that that, that's exactly what's happened this year. So I think we want to make sure to be clear that, yes, there may be some, there, there will be changes down the, down the road, but not a cliff.
Right.
So. Director Alt?
Just to dovetail on your comment, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, and just for my own clarification, so what you're saying basically, Stacy, is, you know, we have earmarked, you know, positions, for example, that, that are funded with, with ESER funds. And you're going to be looking at that over time and tweaking, and as you said, enrollment and other factors and taking those puzzle pieces so that we do land at twelve percent as, as best we can.
Yep.
Without operationalizing money that we don't have.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, I don't want you to be right up against eight percent.
Right.
Twelve percent is a, is a fair number. Again, a large portion of your ESER funds is spending our current, for our current staff that we had going in to COVID. And then we have some of the ESER funds that has been paying for additional funds, for credit recovery, for that trying to get our, our learning back to where it needs to be, the support. So the, first and foremost, we want to protect what we had and then see what we added, what makes sense to continue.
Sure.
And that's what we're going to try to do.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I would also add of what Director Gordon shared, looking for efficiencies too, and not replicate duplicating efforts. So we will be looking at efficiencies also.
Good, good. Oh, Director Chester.
Sorry. And I just appreciate, because I know going into COVID and budgeting and all the relief funds that we were, us, being able to access, access. I know I stress caution in terms of how we utilize it so that we don't go off a cliff because you know that these are temporary dollars. And I appreciate the work that your team has done and the budgeting that we have done over the last three years to set ourselves up to assure it doesn't happen. I mean, we'll be steps down, I mean, because we know that some of this is temp, you know, was all temporary. But that we are in a better position than we were before, knowing this and planning it.
Thank you. And I just want to echo what Dr. Battle and what Stacy said. Tyler, thank you to you and your team. This two hundred and thirty-page budget document that you all prepared is, is incredible. I've never seen anything like it and still digesting a lot of it. So thank you so much to you and your team and kudos for all the work that I know went into creating this.
And, and if you do still find yourself having questions, I promise next year we'll double the size.
I have no further questions. Thank you very much to both of you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next, we will receive a report about the superintendent's evaluation from Anna Werbe, Vice Chair.
Good evening. On May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three, the ISD one ninety-one School Board and Superintendent Teresa Battle met in a closed session to conduct her annual performance review. The review consisted of two parts, five essential duties and three personal district-specific goals set for Superintendent Battle at the beginning of the school year. Based on the assessments completed by all seven board members, Dr. Battle's self-assessment and our discussion during the closed session, it is our assessment that Dr. Battle slightly exceeded our expectations for her during the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The three personal goals set for Superintendent Dr. Battle for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year were as follows. Goal one, improve competency in moving toward adaption and cultural competency as described by the intercultural development continuum. The strategy is to link knowledge of my culture and other cultures to increase the skill of shifting perspectives and to link my cognitive ability to generate cultural appropriateness in my affect and behavior. Goal two, by January two thousand twenty-three, complete action plans for the one-nine-one roadmap strategic directions, a dashboard for the goal, attainment metrics, and profile of a learner. Goal three, by September two thousand twenty-two, present a plan with goals and strategies for reducing enrollment loss and retention of students and implement the plan throughout the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. As part of the performance evaluation process, Dr. Battle completed a self-assessment of her performance, and each individual board member completed their own evaluation of her performance. These combinations of scores make up her total overall final review. The scores this year aligned very closely, meaning we are all in agreement of her performance. It was noted that Dr. Battle has made great strides in involvement with our district's legislative platform, grow your own programs, community outreach, and being a solid trailblazer for our pathways program. The board is appreciative of Dr. Battle's leadership skills that shine through in her ability to promote our district in positive ways. Dr. Battle's passion for our schools is evident in her daily activities and how she conducts herself as the CEO of our district. Thank you, board members, for your assistance in helping to complete Dr. Battle's evaluation. And thank you, Dr. Battle, for your commitment to meeting your goals and your continued dedication to serving our students and leading your staff. And that concludes my statement.
Thank you for your report, Director Werbe. Next, we have a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Well, first, thank you, board members. It has been quite an honor to serve as superintendent, and you've heard me many times say that I am the very proud superintendent of Burnsville Eagan Savage District one ninety-one. It can best be characterized by this celebratory week that we are experiencing. It is the end of the school year, the last day for students today. Highlights include our multiple graduations. We had our best students graduate on Tuesday. Last night, our Burnsville Alternative High School students graduated, and we held our adult basic education honors, where we had new citizens as well as GED, those who received certifications in computer applications. It was just a wonderful evening. This week, I had visited several sites and programs. Today, I went to the senior center and it was quite a crowd. They were there getting ice cream. Sky Oaks, they had a disco party in the gymnasium. And at the end of the day, they were going to honor their fifth graders as they moved on to sixth grade. Many of the students were enjoying outside, saw kickball, different activities. And so I think it was characterized by a sense of accomplishment this week, a sense of joy, and anticipation of summer break for many reasons. Tomorrow night, we will hold our Burnsville High School graduation. But I really want the board and the public to know more about one very special event that occurred Monday. Unfortunately, I was out of the office that day, so I'm going to ask Dr. Chris Belmont, our Assistant Superintendent, to tell you about the return of a one-ninety-one tradition. Dr. Belmont, and then we also have pictures.
Oh, nice. Thank you and good evening. Thank you, Dr. Battle. Good evening, Chair Hume, and members of the board. On this past Monday, June fifth, I was able to witness some of the graduation walks that occurred at each of our eight elementary schools. And you may recall, this was a budding tradition right before the pandemic, just getting started. First, I believe with our avid elective students, and then it kept broadening out more to our, the rest of our twelfth-grade class. These walks featured our seniors in full caps, gowns and cords, walking through the halls to receive cheers, waves, and praise from our elementary students. It was powerful and affirming. Our core values of caring community, agency, future readiness, cultural proficiency, and inclusive partnerships were all intersecting together for a brief and joyous experience. To witness the look on the face of one of our incredible kindergarten teachers, standing alongside her current kinders with a poster board featuring the names and kindergarten pictures of the current twelfth graders walking before her was powerful and affirming out of all accounts. To then see the look of pride and appreciation by those graduating seniors now mostly towering over their former teacher was practical magic and why we do what we do. Finally, to see the look of admiration and energy from our current elementary students was also awe-inspiring. A couple of first graders pulled me aside and said, this is going to be me someday. I am going to graduate high school. I kid you not, that's what they actually said. And I just can't adequately capture for you the looks on their faces and the excitement in their voices as they watched those twelfth graders walk the halls. The waves were real, the embraces were real, the joy was real. It was a perfect season finale to our one-ninety-one show of future-ready and community-strong. Thank you to BHS teachers Matt Deutsch and Jen Waller for championing this experience. Thank you to Mr. Heim, Associate Principal at Burnsville High School, who is lead administrator, who helped make this happen. There were logistical challenges and behind-the-scenes details to work out. Thank you to our elementary principals for hosting and for being so thoughtful and such positive partners to BHS in the planning. I even noticed little details like our retiring teachers being able to lead the grad walk procession. So little ideas with big impact in a short timeframe. Thank you to all our teachers and staff who I'm not mentioning specifically, but I know they helped make this tradition that just earned a little traction before the pandemic even better in the aftermath. Finally, thank you to our graduates for your grace, brilliance, and love of our community. People who do not know us can say what they want about one-ninety-one. We know who we are, and who we are was on full display, full and clear display on Monday. Thank you. Sending it back to you, Dr. Battle.
And with that, we drop the mic. That's what it's about. That includes our report.
Can't beat that. Thank you. Do board members have any reports they wish to share this evening? Director Connor?
I made it to my, my school for the year. Took me all year, but I finally made it. And my school that I was assigned to was Best, so Burnsville Eagan Savage Transition Program. Let's see, Jennifer Midendorf, on May thirty-first, Jennifer Midendorf, who's the program supervisor, she gave me a tour. It was great. I didn't know they had, they did so many things. The program starts after high school with students and their IEPs, and the age ranges from eighteen to twenty-one years. Their vision statement is work, workplace-ready and community-strong. There are currently thirty-six students enrolled. Jennifer states that they expect fifty students in the fall. And they, yeah, fifty unique ability students in the fall, in the program. And so this, in this building, the students work in the coffee cup, they make blankets for animals, they carry, they made those carrying beach bags that we see displayed in the hallway there, and they're seen in the showcase. And then they also sew and make jewelry that is like store-bought. I mean, it's just flawless. I'm, I was so impressed. The internships with our local businesses is very impressive. She gave me a two-page list of all our partnerships with all the businesses, local businesses that partner with them, where they take the students to, for job opportunities and to research those. They visit those different job sites throughout the year with their job coaches. And then they they have craft shows to sell their projects, like the blankets they made, and all that money that they make from that goes back into the materials for the craft so they can make more stuff for their program. Part of this program is called PES, which means Practice Essential Assessment System. I suggested that they make a video too for others to see and just to visualize what they do there, which they did have a really nice video at BEST graduation the other night, and I'm just so proud of this program. Just one little last thing, she did give me a kind of a, you know, just a how they're, how everything they do encompasses the student, and I'm just going to read the top part of it. So it identifies career interests, and then it also has job exploration counseling and employment support services for job training and coaching. So, and then it breaks it down into more categories, but it was very interesting, and I'm glad I made it this year. That completes my report.
Thank you. Any other board members have a report this evening? Director Alt.
Thank you. We have happily returned to our annual clap and dash season with year-end celebrations, performances, and concerts. I have had the distinct pleasure of attending one high school band concert since we last met, in addition to the BEST, BOSS, and adult learner graduation ceremonies. This year in particular, it's been a pleasure to see families and friends attend these events in great numbers to celebrate their learners' accomplishments. I have also appreciated witnessing and learning more about our learners' journeys, their drive, the obstacles they faced and overcame, and to see the joy in their faces as we celebrate them. This is the best season of the year as a board member. We get to joyfully honor our learners of all ages, as well as the teachers, instructors, families, and friends and staff who supported and encouraged them along the way. Thank you. This ends my report.
Thank you. Any others? All right. We will move on then. We'll now move on to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? In that case, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. The first item we are being asked to approve would be the proposed revisions and to re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2023-24 Propay Memorandum of Understanding with the Burnsville Education Association, presented by Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening again, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Each year, we do enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Burnsville Education Association, otherwise known as our teachers, around our Propay Program. That is a local term. State term is more commonly known as QCOM. This is a combination of both state funding and local levy money that goes into, based upon our enrollment, that goes into allowing us to accomplish many of the requirements that are in state statute for peer observations, mentoring, and different supports along those lines. We have a number of different ways in which we use that money. Some of it is with our continuous improvement coaches, some of it is with our building leadership teams that are represented at each of the different sites, and some of it is with our mentoring, as well as our student learning and professional stretch goals, if you will. The teachers voted to approve this in mid-May, 16th through the 18th. This does take a full vote of the membership. So this isn't just their leadership team, this is a full vote of all teachers to approve the MOU on their part. Major language items or changes, major changes include updating the dates within it. We added some building leadership team members to assist with peer observations. Part of that is directly related to our inability to completely fill all of our needs with subs. So we spread around some of the workload to more folks in the district to help with the peer observations. It provides more flexibility in scheduling with the pre-observations, doing the observations, and then the follow-up as well. We also added some clarifying language as to who actually is going to be required to participate in the Propay Program. So we had a little, we had some flexibility or loopholes, loopholes, if you will, where folks could say, "Well, I only want to do this portion," or "I may only want to do this portion," or "My FTE is this, and I don't want to participate at all." So we're closing a lot of that down and just kind of outlining specifically, if you come in at this level, this is what you are required to do. So it's very clear in the front end for folks. With that, I'm bringing the recommendation that the Board of Education approved the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2023-2024 Propay Memorandum of Understanding with the Burnsville Education Association.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Then the last item we are being asked to approve this evening is the contract for the Zoom Phone System hardware licenses and services to Matrix NDI, presented by Rachel Gordon, Director of Technology. Welcome back, Rachel.
Thank you. Good evening again. The information on the recommendation aligns to the informational report from earlier this evening, and so I'm just going to read out the recommendation as that the Board of Education approved the contract for Zoom Phone System hardware licenses and services to Matrix NDI.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Merson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Rachel. And this will conclude the regular portion of our business meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn to a workshop about board goals and superintendent goals?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt. Seconded by Director Chester. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will adjourn for 10 minutes and then come back for our workshop.
Or the exemption that.
I believe you are first on the agenda.
Oh.
Dr. Battle.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You're fine. Not prepared.
Do you need another minute?
Yeah, ask you in a minute.
Well, then I'm gonna go fill up my water bottle.
I'm sorry. Oh, thank you.
Either way. It's been a busy day for you, I take it.
So the goals I'm presenting to you tonight reflect the continued equity work. We never really complete or culturally proficient because if a new situation arises, it may take you time to understand. And so the first goal I do have is a continuation about my equity work. And I have some items here for evidence of performance that when making decisions that may have an impact to multiple constituents, that I will seek out those multiple perspectives and use two tools that we all have access to. First, our cultural proficiency framework utilizing those essential elements. And I listed those essential elements. And then the board will continue its work with TeamWorks. And I'll be joining you. And there is a tool that was referenced at the last retreat called Leading in the Public Square that really focuses on gathering those multiple perspectives in your governance work. So learn about and use the Leading in the Public Square. Apply the tools to a major project, board policy, or contentious issue, and then provide examples of ways that I have included these multiple perspectives in my planning.
Do we want to talk about one goal at a time? Or do you want to go through the whole thing at once? Why don't you go through the whole thing?
Okay.
Just wanted to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the second is to continue monitoring achievement of students. We have the dashboard. I need to have a progress monitoring tool to make sure that we're on progress and can we make some shifts when we believe we're not getting the student results that we desire. So I'll have a plan to monitor schools' progress by providing a template and a process to report to me on a quarterly basis, present the completed dashboard, the baseline data, now that we have baseline data after this year, and targets, and strategies that we're using to achieve, and report that progress continuing through the committee of the whole, the student achievement and performance, our pre-K-12 pathways reports, enrollment and equity reports, and then work with you, if you want a summary of all of that information. So I will be bringing you the dashboard with the completed metrics. You'll actually see that. That's by September 30th, present that report to you.
That could probably be September 30th of 2023, though, right?
Oh, thank you.
That's why we're having a conversation.
That's right, okay. That'll be a change. Then feedback from my performance evaluation is increased knowledge of best practices to achieve effectiveness of district operations. And I listed those departments. And really using a project management tool because it's so vast and diverse and complex. When I meet one-on-one with my direct reports, they do give me an update. And a couple are using a project development tool. And it's been really helpful to see those deliverables and to keep on track. So participate in professional development about key areas for management of operations. One in particular, Dave Lake, has an annual, it's a summer kickoff conference. And one of the main topics is long-term facilities maintenance. But it's right now, it's in conflict with either AMSD or one other. So we're trying to see if it's recorded and Dave will go through that information with me. At the retreat with TeamWorks, Christine Robleski, we talked about that long-range facilities planning. So really, I put that as evidence of performance. So really, to have a guiding change document, project management deliverables, engagement opportunities for students, parents, staff, and community members to provide feedback on long-range planning. That concludes my draft goals.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think we'll go through one goal at a time and see what, if any, feedback board members have. So the first goal was the professional development goal around competency towards, or cultural competency.
Yes.
Want to have any thoughts, questions, or comments about that goal?
Well, I mean, I don't really, I appreciate it's been added because we, as we discussed previously, that this is an ongoing process and definitely needs to continue. So I mean, beyond that, I really don't have anything more. I think I, I think we all, I for sure made myself clear at that time that I would like to see the goal there as it is.
Yeah, and I think we talked about at the, was it at the last, was it at the last workshop? That you're right, that it's a constant, you're constantly learning. And you might think that you're at a certain point, and then something will happen and you'll realize, you know, it's like three steps forward and two steps back. And we had a couple of things that we've talked about previously that happened this year that show that I think we all have a ways to go on our cultural competency. So I appreciate that that is still in there for next year.
Thank you.
So if there are no other comments on that one?
I just, no, I just wanted to say because of how it was more listed on the evaluation as, you know, Abigail had thought more personal rather than part of her, you know, actual evaluation, should we just make note of that? Because do we want to continue? I mean, it's her professional, part of her professional development. But do we really need to then include it when we do the evaluation next year? Because if it's more, that's something her, her personal goal. But are we supposed to really be rating her on it?
Well, I think the fact that there is evidence, I appreciate the evidence because that kind of links the personal to the professional for me. That kind of made sense, so.
I think it should be there too because it is part of profession. And it's linked to a value.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be there, I'm saying that, you know, do we need to include it in the part that we, where we have it on the selfie ballot? Or so are we still going to rate her, I guess is what my question is.
Oh, okay. Well, I think with the, with the inclusion of the evidence, I think that wasn't there last time. With the evidence, I think there's more, you know, there's more to look at, right?
Yeah, so that's a change I made.
Yeah.
There's a metric.
There is a metric, yeah, it's a smart goal, yep, exactly, exactly, yep, yep.
And I just want to say those evidence, I do appreciate it. I mean, there's great things I think that are gonna be benefited and asked in our district better. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other final comments on that goal? If not, we will move on to the first of the district-focused goals. Monitor school progress toward achieving their site student achievement goals for the 191 roadmap dashboard metrics. Questions or feedback around this goal?
I think this is, it offers a great tiered approach, right? And, and progress over time. It, it makes sense.
And I appreciate the actual road, gate, gate timed response. Can't find my words. The, the actual statement, you know, that there'd be a dashboard completed by X date, et cetera.
Yep.
Muddled around through that.
And change the 2024 to 23.
Right.
Yes.
And that's setting goals for the next two years. It might be a similar goal, but we'll have that conversation next June.
Have to revise the date.
I think for me, what I appreciated about this goal is I think in the past, some of the goals that we've had have been very specific on do this by this date, which is good, which is part of it, but this, this goes into more depth. And I think that's gonna help, that it's not just chuck a box that something was done by a certain date, but that also all the other important things that make that date and everything that comes before or after that date meaningful are there as well. So I'm happy to see that in the goals for this year.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other comments around that goal, the last, right? There's three, yeah, the last goal, the third goal, increase knowledge of best practices around district operations.
And that one, as you've shared, I am a teacher, I'm still a teacher. And so this is an area of growth for me, the operations side. So just wanted to have that as an explicit goal.
And with the change in the state law around meals, the food nutrition is a big, this is a good year to learn more about that.
Stacy will be critiqued tomorrow by Julie. It's just so complex and it's such a big piece. Even our core business is teaching and learning, it's such a big piece.
Even what he presented earlier tonight, it's obvious it's not just as easy as the legislature passes the law and they write a check and it's done. There's a lot more, very complex, even, even with the great new legislation that was approved. So it'll be important for, for you to understand that as the superintendent.
Yeah, I think for a couple of different reasons, this is really well timed.
I think the, just to comment on that too, I think you and your staff really are on it as far as timing because just like Governor Walz just signed Juneteenth into the holiday, it's a holiday, a state holiday, and then you guys had to figure out, okay, are we gonna have a paid holiday? Is school gonna be out? Is, you know, who's gonna get paid, this guy? So, you know, you're just like throwing things at you and you still handle it in a timely manner. We got information, the teachers got information of what they need to do in just a few days. So that's good, I think.
Thank you. One other note about that, it's extremely important with the complexity that we rely on our partners. So Minnesota School Boards Association put out a summary and said, please consult with your general counsel because we all have different employment contracts. So that's really key too with the knowledge is asking them, they reply, they're great, whether it's AMSD, MSBA, so that's a part two of the knowledge, just seeking out the answers.
And the, the other associations, Stacy, you know, yeah, the professional associations, yeah.
Masbo, school business professionals are extremely helpful.
Other comments? Oh, all right. So someone remind me, do we, is this done? Or do we have to approve them at a future meeting? I don't remember.
It's either a report or.
A report on the goals.
I, I think we can just receive it as a report.
Okay, that's what I would assume.
June 22nd? Yeah, okay, I just have to make that one.
Today's the, yeah, two weeks from today is the.
Two weeks, okay.
All right. Next is, I'm actually gonna go through it in the Google Docs. If you all have feedback, I can just make the changes right there. So for the board goals, the next agenda item, we had the workshop a few weeks ago and maybe, it might have been a month ago now. It's been a while, about the board goals and decided and agreed that we wanted to keep the first two goals, I think, pretty similar to what they've done, but to maybe add a little bit of a, a little bit more around the measures of progress. I know there was, I had some comments in my notes about wanting to have a clearer connection between our board goals and student achievement and student outcomes. So I tried to work that in with what I've drafted. So I'll just go through. So goal one, cultural proficiency, building on the work from recent years. All ISD 191 board members will understand and be able to articulate the district's work in being a culturally proficient school system. And then underneath that, members of the, of the Board of Education will work to understand how CPSS is reflected in our district and the plan for further implementation, and be able to articulate why the work of CPSS is an important factor in fostering an environment that ensures the best possible outcomes for all students. I think this is the goal that I made the least changes to from last year. Measures of progress, we'll have a facilitated retreat to learn more about CPSS, where the district fits, plans for continued implementation, and how this work leads to improved outcomes for students. I did add that part. Board members will receive information from cultural liaisons or other appropriate representatives from the school as part of school reports during the school board meetings. So that's the first goal. I'm just gonna do as Dr. Battle did and go through all three, and then we'll go back and discuss them one at a time. Goal two was supporting and leveraging new methods and original thinking to improve student outcomes. So all board members will understand and be able to articulate our pathways K-12 program and use it to inform, inform setting district priorities. Seems like weird wording, but. So as, as members of the board, we will have a deeper understanding of how the pathways program is reflected in our district, especially within our elementary and middle schools, and understand how the pathways leads to improved student outcomes. So we will, we would consider having a dedicated workshop to have a deep dive into the progress of pathways, receive reflections of pathways as part of the school reports, and receive dashboard reports which reflect the district's progress in meeting our pathways goals. And then goal three, creating space and opportunity for each and every voice to be heard. So that as a district, it is the responsibility of the ISD 191 Board of Education to be transparent with our community and to receive community input to inform decision-making. So we would seek input from multiple voices that represent the full diversity of our communities in order to inform our decisions and continue to be transparent in our communication with the community. Measures of progress would be, board members will ensure members of the community have opportunities to provide input regarding district activities like budgeting through community gatherings, surveys, et cetera. We will learn how information is getting to our families and staff, identify gaps, and have staff work to resolve the gaps, leading to improved transparency. And we would understand which voices are represented in survey results, identify any missing voices, and learn to plan, learn the plan to reach them. And then this, this last one is actually a new goal that I wanted to add as a result of some of the, like the last retreat we had back in April. And it's also a topic of the retreat we have next week. Providing appropriate governance and guidance, and also as a result of your evaluation, part of the conversation we had around your evaluation. So providing appropriate governance and guidance to Dr. Battle and her team, that all ISD 191 board members will understand and live up to the governance role of the Board of Education in supervising and providing support and guidance to the superintendent. So as board members, we would better understand the differences between governance and management and board work and interactions with the superintendent, clarify expectations with Dr. Battle around communications protocols and other items where she needs board support or board direction. And then measures of progress would include, board members will participate in one or more facilitated retreats to discuss board governance versus board management in order to better understand the appropriate role of the board and individual board members. And we would work with Dr. Battle to review and clarify the board superintendent communications protocols to ensure alignment and clear expectations among all board members and Dr. Battle. So that's what we have is draft goals. So we'll go, one goal at a time, again. So any thoughts or feedback around that cultural proficiency goal, goal one?
I think it's fine as is.
Okay, this side of the table agree?
Agree.
Okay. Goal two, supporting and leveraging new methods and original thinking to improve student outcomes. Mostly focused on pathways, but I guess this is mostly on pathways, but that's such a big focus for the district, how could it not?
How do we get a deeper understanding besides all the information we're already given?
I think, from my perspective, I think a lot of the understanding comes from, you know, we had the, the retreat at the high school a few months ago. We have, we have, we get more information about pathways anytime a school, a school, the school presentations that are happening. I think all of that information is giving us a deeper understanding. So kind of building on things that have already, that are already happening and continuing to reinforce. I mean, yeah, we have a lot of information, but I know there's still a lot about, I mean, it's kind of like your, your cultural competency comment that we know, we think we know a lot, but we don't know it all. And so I think there's always more that we can learn. And the more we know about what's happening in our schools, the better we are going to be in making decisions that affect our schools.
I agree, just like when I visited Best, they, I found out more information there.
Great example, yes, exactly.
And also, if you remember when we made the first presentation pre-COVID, it was a. was a three-year plan, and then we had, uh, the pause on some items, so we're still adding pieces too, so there will be some new things.
Well, and I also think, oh, sorry, go ahead, Anna.
No, I was gonna say, um, could this be, I mean, I'm seeing an emphasis on pathways, but like, like, we, you know, we've seen other things like on Hagerty and, and other programs that we have in our district.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good one.
Why, why is it just, you know, pathways? It's part of this goal, so there's more than, more than just pathways that we should be looking at.
We say, including, including but not exclusive to pathways or something, yeah, it's a good point.
That's a good point.
Well, yeah, and any of the new things that you were talking about, the math and the Hagerty that's addressing the, the, some of the core goals for the district.
Well, and also recognizing that, um, because of the pandemic, there are still many, a higher percentage of students that are struggling to get through school. I, I think, um, yes, and Hagerty math, and being mindful about how are we making sure that we're helping that higher percentage of students, whether they're in person or in virtual academy, to get where they need to be. Cause I think we did a really, I, I feel like we did a really good job this path, this past year with pathways, and I don't wanna, I wouldn't wanna, you know, let it go, certainly. I think it's, that pathways for sure still, Dr. Battle, to your point, you know, you're still adding, um, and there are other things we probably can.
Right.
Add back in.
Like inclusive of, but like I said, not only.
Exactly.
It's like kind of a yes and, like you said, right? Yes, pathways and Hagerty and all the other things that.
Whatever that fine name for math was.
Right, right, exactly. Like that Hagerty name really stuck in all of our minds for whatever reason, the other ones are like, and the math one. Which is also really good, but we don't remember the name of that one.
They'll need to change the parrots.
Well, I, I like how it has new methods in there because, you know, that's kind of.
Right. I, I think the way the goal embold, the way it's worded, we could probably keep that the same, it's the stuff underneath it.
Yeah, 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 the, the measurement.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that's very good feedback, thank you. Any other comments around that? All right, we'll move on to goal three. Creating space and opportunity for each and every voice to be heard as we are ensuring transparency in the community. This might actually be the one I made the least changes to from last year, from what I'm remembering.
I like the part where, um, we have to understand the board members part as the board part and not the management part.
That's the next goal, but yes, that's the next goal, this is the transparency one.
Aren't we on three?
Way too far.
Aren't we on goal three now?
Yeah. This one, keep going on.
Oh, oh, I just went, I just went a pair, some pair of graphs ahead, okay, well, I'm still on three though, I'm sorry. I jumped ahead, cause I read ahead, okay.
I agree with you when we get to that goal.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Any other, any comments around goal three, around transparency?
I think it's good.
All right.
It's a good goal.
And then goal four, here you go, Director Connor, provide appropriate governance and guidance to Dr. Battle and her team. And this is the, like I said, the new goal that I added based on all the different conversations we've had over the last month or so.
And add the period after doctor.
Now, what was that?
Yep, she's right, yeah.
Period.
I'm not good at doing periods in this, but, so, thank you. Done, so this is why I did it in the, in the Google Docs. Literally doing it, it's done, 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 done.
Editing in real time.
Exactly, my favorite way to edit.
I'll, I'll agree with what, um, Director Connor said on, you know, the difference between governance and management, cause I think that board retreat we had the last time, that was, um, great to like clarify.
Yeah.
You know, and not mesh the two together when we're, um, doing our work, so I like that you actually have them in here, so.
Yeah, thanks for adding that in there.
I'd like to propose that we add a, a third bullet to that under members of the district, one anymore in Board of Education will, um, you can occur after to better understand the differences, also better, um, understand the role, uh, excuse me, better understand the responsibility charged to the role by the, by the electorate.
That's a good one. That's a big one.
All right. Better understand, I added a few words, cause that's what I do, but better understand the responsibilities charged to board mem, to the board member role by the members of the publicly elected us?
Sure, that's fine, yep.
Do you have thoughts on how we would measure that for the measure of progress section?
Well, how are we going to?
Or maybe that, maybe that's covered by the retreat, I don't know.
I believe so. I don't, I think it falls under the, I think it's an extension of the first bullet.
Okay. I like that change.
It's sort of professional development, I suppose.
Right.
That'll make us understand more of what we're supposed to do.
Exactly. Any other?
Sounds good.
All right, I'll make those changes, I just made the change you just suggested, Eric, but I will make the, um, a few tweaks to the, the goal two in time for it to be sent out in board book next week for the meeting on the 22nd.
Cool. Okay.
And unless there is anything else, I think we are, that was the only thing on the workshop agenda, so we can be, we are, we are adjourned.
At 8:47 PM, I'm texting Jamie now.
Half as long as the last meeting.
Do we take these home? Journals?
Four.
They were in our.
Tomorrow.
Am I the only one that got it?
I didn't see one, but I.